All right, let's, let's call the meeting to order of March fourth, twenty twenty five zoning commission of German township. Dr. Shawna, please call the.
All right, Mr. Glender is not here. Kurt Jacoby.
President.
Dave Jenks.
Here.
Dan Lee.
Here.
Mr. Rigger.
Yes.
Joe Schaller, welcome to the table.
Yes, thank you.
And Trish Taylor.
Yeah. So, welcome, Joe. Thank you for, Dan and I were talking about something, oh, it was regarding the case, right? Which I printed out and probably left over there, but, um, did you happen to see that?
I, I just saw that it happened. I haven't had a chance to read it yet.
Yeah. You read it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just read it today. I hadn't read it yet. I read the, which included the transcript of the actual hearing.
Oh, great.
Give us a synopsis real quick.
It's the big.
I'll tell you what.
Takeaway.
It was like thirty pages long.
Oh, seriously? Yeah, sure. They said they backed us up. I mean, they, they said they said that they, they didn't have any real argument. They couldn't even say that, if I remember right, the defendant couldn't even say that it wasn't a health and public safety issue. It was just a minor, but they couldn't. There was nothing. They had nothing.
Well, they did have something. There's a requirement to have the desired outcome. The desired outcome was all in their favor. We want to be a more product to the. Or not even arguing to the outside Ohio.
Oh, not even. They still have thirty days to appeal, so we're kind of holding our breath until.
Wow.
But far.
And then you had some observations with regard to that that you pass on the date.
Oh, yeah, a lot of them. I can't think what I said.
With regard to Pete.
Oh, yeah, I, I was just telling Shawna even what she included. I mean, I was really impressed with the way that was so nailed down. I mean, from every, which is, I guess it makes it easier when we have all the facts on the.
Yeah, everybody came to the table with a lot of facts. I know it mentioned Jeremy Holbrook's.
Right.
Letter that he had written, because I, I made sure when it, as soon as I got that, I, next time I saw him, I thanked him again for that, you know, because that was, that was a big deal.
Yeah.
The fact that they're not keeping up with the roads and.
Right. Oh, I think so very much and.
And even now, they're, they're starting to tear up Segal. So Jeremy's been in contact with them and asked them, you know, could you stop sending them walking down Segal? Could you, you know, take state routes? They're made for these trucks. So.
We had, I know this outside of our purview and, but I've, we had a discussion sometime about the fact that the truck's going back that way. And, and I think you said there's no way that we can do that, but I see there's a sign right here. Doesn't it say that state trucks must take state routes? I, I think I saw it just a couple of weeks ago.
I rarely pay attention to anything other than like speaking.
Well, anyway, but the other things I'd said, I was really impressed with how, how Pete Barker handled that meeting and also with Shawna. Her, her, she had a big upfront part of that, basically just saying what the facts were. It was really quite, quite clear. And I was even impressed with, now, we had a couple of contentious meetings here where people were, when that originally went up, the discussion about down there at one twenty-three and Butter Street. And people, I think it was more emotional than it was, I don't know, say fact-based, it was fact-based, but it was just people were came out, were up in arms, which I understand. But this meeting, all the residents, at least what I can tell on paper from reading it, presented a great case.
They did.
With, with photographs and, and just their statements about exactly what it would do. And these were all along the lines of the, what are eight statements about it had to fulfill for the.
Uh, the standards?
Yeah, eight standards.
Yeah.
And they all spoke right to one of the standards. Of course, Barker had said upfront, you have to speak to the standards. We won't, I didn't, I didn't seem cutting anybody off, but.
Yeah.
I was really impressed with.
Wanted more statements of fact than emotional.
So the residents, I mean, they did their homework. They, they really had added a lot of good evidence. Then, of course, they met those criteria that, so, yeah, the, the judge, the very last statement they made, or judge or wherever it is, court made was that they really had not proved their case and there's no need to, and I wasn't sure about, you don't know if there'll be an appeal then. There's another.
No, we're waiting here. The lawyers said that she was on the snow.
You know, I'm, I'm a novice at this, but I haven't paid much attention, but it seems to me it didn't help their case if they didn't show up at the BTA hearing.
Yeah, I, I kind of just skimmed it because like you said, it's pretty long, but I, I didn't notice where that was even mentioned, but.
Yeah. There was representative there. There was some representative there, but.
It was a real estate agent.
Oh, is that?
That poor lady, I, I sat there and I watched her and she just watched the permission.
The most again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the thing. She was like a deer in a.
Okay, well, anyway, it's more to come, I guess, on that. I, I should have asked if you could give a little background on yourself. You know, we, we've all known each other and met for, you know, a few years.
Yeah, of course. I've been an attorney for twenty-five years now, all in the same law firm. We primarily, I, I, the, the firm is a full-service business law firm with like six hundred and fifty lawyers in the middle of the United States. I'm part of our government services group and our labor employment group. Uh, so we represent a lot of cities, a lot of townships, a lot of school districts, counties in the state and and, you know, I have, I, I do a lot of schoolwork as well. And I was the chair of the Ohio Council of School Attorneys and the National Council of School Attorneys. I was the president of that as well. And, you know, lately I, I, one of the reasons I wanted to get on the BZA initially was just because I wanted to experience it from the other side of the table. And, and my colleagues did a lot of the zoning, zoning cases, but I didn't particularly do a lot of them. So I wanted to understand more about that process. And similarly here, but I think here now, like, this is a pretty critical time. I think not only in the state, you can kind of see some of the legislation giving townships a little bit more authority. Uh, but I think also in the township, uh, you know, this is a, a township with a brand-new school and a lot of promise. And, you know, I think as a zoning commission, we have to make sure that if there's development, it's developed the right way. And, you know, when I say that, you know, I'm not, I mean, I, I think that the, the motto, the, the preservation is the, the key here. And we have to preserve it, but, uh, you know, we, we aren't in control of everything. And so we need to, I think, where we can be kind of ahead of the game and preserve the township as much as possible. Uh, you know, that's, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to be on the commission. So other than that, I've had two sons graduate from Valley View, both in college now, one son, freshman in high school. So, uh, my, my, my time there is only just a few, few years left as far as having a, a child in. My father was the, recently the superintendent of schools for the last few years during the building project. Uh, not before, but just, you know, kind of the last three years, uh, but he's retired now. So that's, that's, that's about it.
Good. Joe lives out on Astoria.
Yeah, I live.
Really new house on the east-west side.
Yeah.
The McMansion.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a.
Nice place.
Thank you. Thank you.
Those national boards and state, state boards qualified you to serve here.
I was working hard to do that.
Yeah. I'd say he passes, you know, qualifications.
Well, I think having someone who's, who's previously served on the BZA could be beneficial.
Oh, I definitely think.
He's seen both sides.
Especially with the legal side and the BZA. I mean, I mean, the thing that you probably heard every year, or at least the last few years, we've been asking the BZA is tell us about your perspective and now, here you are, you're right here with us. You can maybe give us more perspective too. I agree. I think, hate to use a probably a worn-out word, but we're proactive. We do need to be more that way in terms of trying to anticipate what we need to do and to change the resolutions to, to have it as nailed down as we've had on this case, uh, which is a great thing to do, but make sure they're further locked down and, or, and forward-looking.
Well, and, and to add to what you said, Joe, in terms of, of dynamics right here in the township, we're, we're looking at. Trish was talking about just before everybody came in before the meeting, that she had done some research for us, yeah, checking to see about the state funding for writing new resolutions for townships. And that money is there, but they don't have the process set up yet. And you talked to the OTA, the Township Association, and somebody else was.
Well, I called the General Assembly first. I was trying to figure out who you're supposed to call, so I went big first. Then we're narrowing it down, so, um, I'm still narrowing it down. They said to call the OTA and then, so I just contacted the executive of that township council. And we'll see what she says when she calls me back. But I, this Joe who was in the General Assembly, he, um, he said they might not be quite ready yet, so. I just wanted to know what the process was and when the, if there were paper copies, how you would go about getting a hold of those grants, so we'll see what Heidi's. Heidi Fott is supposed to call me back.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Um, she's an attorney for a while ago.
Yeah, so she was the first number one. Remember I said there were like eight or nine people in the list to call? I didn't know which extension to contact, so maybe they can direct me, but I need to talk to. Yeah.
Okay. That's great, yeah. So we, we'll have that opportunity to try to, you know, pay advantage of that at some point. I, I understand it's a grant process, as we were talking about earlier, you know, applying for the grant to get the money. And we don't know how much they're going to give, but, um, you know, somebody's done some estimates anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to redo these resolutions from the ground up.
When I can see, I didn't realize you were doing all that research. I just was out of curiosity, was looking up. I didn't make those kinds of calls. I just was looking on the internet under, under the Ohio Assembly and.
This was an aggravation to me that had, like, nobody had said anything, like, if there's a grant, if there is, it has to be tangible.
Well, I, I, I used this, those following, hook you come from, from the last, you come from the last meeting about, you'd seen it on the HB three fifteen.
Yeah, that's what I looked at.
So that's why I've looked up under there. And there does appear to be a line item. It's, it's got a strange thing. It's, it's like a million five hundred thousand.
It is.
Total.
One point.
A line item.
Yeah. That's what I read too.
But it doesn't, again, it doesn't say where.
Leaves you there and no phone number.
There was another thing that.
Divided by thirteen.
Well, no, divided by how many people know about.
Exactly. So trying to get, be proactive. Trish Taylor.
This is, yeah, this is fine. We'll, we'll get back to Shawna's report at the point here. But, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Trish knows more than I do, probably. I just, I just was, like I said, just dabbling around, looking for stuff. But I, I looked at that, the HB three fifteen and, and it looks like there's like only, um, like somewhere, mainly, at least when you do a search on that, there's only like about ten pages that actually was about the, uh, from page one thirty-seven to one forty-four. There's like three hundred pages in this. HB three fifteen. And that's a section that talks more, more about the effects on, on zoning. It's section five one nine. It's the section that deals with zoning in our, in the ORC. I guess, I'm reading up from my abbreviated notes here, but anyway, uh, you know, I couldn't find a reference to what, uh, how it's being set up. But I did find another link by just looking at the name of that. What was it called? The, um, remember the name? It's called the Housing Technical Assistant. Do you have it written down what that was, Trish?
No.
It's called the Housing Technical Assistance is what the name of that program is. You know, Housing Technical Assistance under section nine point four A two of the revised code. It said that was where you could find. I couldn't find specifics on that. I think it was because it was probably the old wording. But somewhere in there, by, by then searching on that term and looking for, it also mentioned somewhere about the development. The Ohio Development, Department of Development, I think is where it was from. I found a sheet. Are you aware of this, Shawna? There's a sheet in there that's, that's talking about appropriations. It's just about, it's just about appropriations, four pages. Put it into, unpacked it into two pages, but it has, it's under legislator.Ohio.gov. And some form in there, it was under appropriations, referring back to HB three fifteen appropriations. There's a lot of stuff in here that would help the township, so I didn't know if you were aware of that. I got the, um, URL in here. But one of them deals with township zoning violations. You hear this, there's, one of the ways I think you're saving money is to get rid of the zoning, you could get rid of zoning inspectors, which.
Oh, that would break my heart.
You gotta hear, I thought that was interesting. They thought that though, because I thought, they don't know Shawna. Because what they're saying they're going to get rid of is something you don't have time to do much. And here's, I'll read the paragraph. It's pretty interesting. It's called Township Zoning Violations. The bill classified zoning violations as civil violations, which potentially decreases their enforcement cost. Instead, is why, instead of hiring a zoning inspection employee to enforce the zoning code, townships could use police officers for zoning enforcement. Courts may incur costs to hold a hearing if the civil fine is disputed. These costs may be offset by court fees. It is unclear how many townships would classify zoning violations as civil violations, how many fines would be issued and how many fines would be disputed in court.
I could tell you, uh, the percentage of police officers that would just love that idea. They don't have near enough stuff to do. Well, I know, like, Kristen in Jackson Township were complaint-based, so my hands are pretty much tied unless someone makes a complaint. But Kristen in Jackson, so if one of her officers or chief or somebody drive her around looking for stuff, and they will write tickets. Like, I know a guy comes in when I'm working at Snickers and, uh, he was complaining the other day that he got a violation letter. It's like, no problem.
Well, you said before violation letters are effective.
Yeah, well, if you can get them to them. Marvin, I tried three different addresses on that dude. I cannot get it to go anywhere. He's, he's just not picking it up or what? That's the worst part about certified letters is if they don't come up. But generally, yes, if you can get them in the letter.
I just thought, because I've had, we've heard complaint, and we all have probably heard complaints about people saying that we don't have any teeth in our, in our resolutions because we can't, we can't force someone to do something. And I thought it would have a lot more authority if, if one of the officers showed up to.
Yeah.
And make a civil complaint about that or civil violation rather than.
Back in, Marvin, remember this, Dave too, maybe, uh, you know, Laurie Merbach would show up with, you know, the police.
Oh, yeah.
Our neighbors.
Show up with what? The police?
She was threatened ahead of time, I think, of why she did that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm afraid to go by herself before that happened.
Yeah, threatened her.
Not in her case, but, you know, she thought there was going to be trouble, yeah.
But she did her, she was going to do her job regardless.
That's not surprising.
She wouldn't get a back.
Who was this? My predecessor.
Several, like three or four.
Yeah. Yeah, do, um, would you have any insight of the way this might take shape with this money for the resolution? I mean, would they throw out any templates for us to, to start with, uh, you know, to kind of flesh out a framework? Or would they just hand us a wad of money and say, hire an attorney and get, and fix your resolution? How's that done?
Well, my guess is that the grants will probably be, my guess is, I think there are a handful of companies that help townships with their resolutions, a handful of them. And my guess is that those townships or those, those companies will be, you know, putting together some pretty nice presentations of, for places potentially like us, who could be their client. And so that's, that's a note that I all, that I've just made about contacting them and finding out what they're doing, and maybe we can get on their list.
Wow. So they would write the grant. They would be.
They would, either that or give us some, some really good guidance.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
You probably said more than what this is. I think this might just be planning stage stuff, just like defining the other thing, but this is another paragraph in the same document I was talking about. Just show that and read it, but you can just, the township, something, see there.
It's a paragraph.
Give me some other insight, legal-wise and what I would understand from that.
No, I think it's this, I mean, I think that, that, that's the same as, as I heard your understanding.
We gotta make that available for at least that URL. I, I meant to have copies ahead of time, but I didn't get that done. I want you to have it too, Shawna, because it has other things. It has about roads in here, just funding for roads. It's not, this is all just zoning. This, this is all just appropriations for different areas.
And your general comment just a little bit ago, you know, one of the exciting things looking forward is that townships, it looks like the higher legislature legislature has not only given, but is continuing to give townships a little more authority. And you had mentioned in passing someplace that you thought that, um, you know, I think it was the organizational meeting in, in January that you thought that the biggest change that this new legislation is going to give was civil.
Yeah.
Civil fines.
Yeah, and some neighboring townships have already implemented them.
Is that.
Like, we talked about it in January, they're already implementing them and executing them. And it's given them, you know, I think the way that at least one township has done it is like the, you know, the first, you know, they, they give the, the first violation is, I don't know, a hundred dollars. You know, if you don't fix it, the second one's two hundred dollars, four hundred dollars, eight hundred dollars. I don't know what it, but, you know, and it gets up to, and then, you know, that's a daily fine until you fix it. And, um, I mean, I think that that's, you know, otherwise we're stuck with what we have right now, which is telling people to do it, and if they don't do it, what happens?
That's nothing. And this would have to be included into our resolution because it has to be accessible to the public as far as what, what the penalties are. They, they have to be able to know.
Yeah, what the consequences are. But I think it's something that, I'll have to check on this, and, and somebody here might know, but I don't think it's something that has to go to a vote of the, of the township. I think it's something that perhaps the township trustees have to vote on it. And I'll, I'll, I'll find out about that implementation, but, you know, if we can get a hold of some of those things, there's no reason why we, we shouldn't do that very soon.
You mean us or the township?
Uh, well, however it works, I assume that, that we, do we make recommendations to the township trustees and the township trustees approve it?
We are strictly advisory.
Yeah, so we would make a recommendation and, you know, push them to, to do it. And it, why are we complaint-based?
That's always what I've.
It's resources.
Yeah, that's understood too. It's always been, if you don't know, it's always been a, a part-time position. It's always been combined with, um, these like deliveries, or is it with other?
Trash.
Trash and don't use supply.
Well. Yeah, I, I'm full-time, but between three offices, but I don't think it's always been that. I don't think they've ever had, Lori may have been at one point, but.
I thought she was.
She did the trash too, you know.
The billing.
I know when she retired, yeah, she was just trash and this department. She was full.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, because she, she was our secretary or whatever. She got off of that.
How are others labeled?
There may also be a.
What would that be?
Mindset of conflict avoidance at the, at the trustee level.
Haven't we been down this road before?
Not like.
I mean, would we as a zoning commission feel like that the conflict or the complaint-based thing is best?
I don't know what's the other. What, what was, what's the title of?
Looking at what, what.
He is so.
Looking for, like, Jack.
I would have to drive around and.
Drive around and go.
Find violations. But that, that, that is tough with, with my given zoning. Yes, like right now, zoning is blowing up. It's going to be a busy spring for the BZA.
What are the types of cases coming before the BZA?
That's what you should ask. That's part of our thing that we did here.
Go ahead, Shawna.
So, next week, next Tuesday, we have Lou Potter's variance. So he has a family-owned couple of parcels. Uh, he has the original sheepskin deed signed by President James Madison in eighteen eleven. It was originally a hundred and sixty acres. There's a whole backstory. In, I think, nineteen fifty-six, the blacksmith was using the old schoolhouse as his blacksmith shop. And something happened. I can't remember what. I have to look back at my notes, but they split off one acre off the hundred and fifty-nine. Actually, they split off five acres so that he could build a house and live near his shop. Well, as soon as the, the split was done, he donated or, or sold back four of those acres. So there's now a hundred and fifty-nine acre parcel and a one acre parcel. Mr. Potter wants to recombine those into one parcel and put it in a land conservation trust so that it can't be split, it can't be developed, it can't, nothing can happen to it ever again. Problem with that is there is two houses on the one and fifty-nine acres and one house on the one acre. So now you're going against the one house per parcel. He's asking for a variance for that. That is next week. Um, we're very.
Pretty non-controversial.
Yeah, I mean, I think, to be honest, in, in my opinion, which doesn't mean much, yes, it, it breaks the one residence per parcel rule. But what he's overall trying to do in putting the hundred and sixty, sixty acre parcel back together and conserving it so that it can't be split and it can't be developed, I think goes along with that preservation.
What are the, so the other two houses, I mean, how, they're not buying, they're not split off on their own? Or just somehow they go, got two houses on that?
Yeah, I, which I don't know how, I think, you know, the original one's pretty old. I don't know how old the second one is.
And including the schoolhouse?
No. They're, they're wanting to, to re, not redo the schoolhouse, but bring it back.
So preserve it.
Yeah. Where it used to look.
Why doesn't he just do it with the hundred and fifty-nine acres?
Because he, he wants the original hundred and sixty acres that was on the sheepskin deed.
Oh, okay.
Still has the sheepskin deed.
That's cool.
Yeah.
So we'll see how that one goes. I have a very interesting proposal for the Harris Road party pond. Um, I had gotten an email and kind of had an email exchange with these people and they told me what they wanted to do. And I said, oh, it's really not, that goes kind of against everything that we allow. Basically, they want to do a family compound back. They want to take that, I can't remember how many, I think forty-some acres. Um, and actually, they, they brought me a really well-put-together picture where it splits it into four different parcels. Parents want to build on one, and then they have three grown daughters, and right now they all live on the same street in Myhamsburg. But they want to build four separate houses and then build a, like a pool in the middle with a pool house and pickleball courts and a baseball field, like. I mean, they're, they talked, they, they came in and met with me, and to be honest, it's kind of a zoning nightmare, yes. But it might be the best use for that land because, A, Harris Road, it's not, it's not going to bring a campground. It's not going to be noisy party pond. It's, it's not going to bring a bunch of traffic. It's going to be people, just residents. Um, it's increased tax income for the township. It's, there's not much else someone can do on that land with what it is, so.
Not great for farming.
And it's not. It really isn't. You, you really, you really cannot farm it, I mean, looking at it.
How much frontage is on that property?
Not enough. They'd have to get, they'd have to get a variance, but they, they, they said, uh, because I told them, I said, there's some frontage, the driveway's not long enough. You've got, you've got four parcels, one driveway. They, they said, well, we'll put in a private drive. We don't care. They've been, they've been looking for land to do this for two years. They said, we, we've got the resources and we've got the time. They, they really want to make this happen, so I said, well, I, I'll see what I can.
Isn't our, um, it's been a long time since I saw that part. I remember some discussion, more of them, I don't know better, I'm sure you do. In fact, I know you know better, but, uh, so I'll just tell you what, where it comes from. There was some discussion about how long drivers had to be, and it's all set by fire.
Standards.
Thousand feet, no more than a thousand feet.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly, but that's, that's what you're dealing with.
That was for private residents, yeah.
And that's why it's done, for safety factors and turns of fire, so I don't know what, what the.
They, they talked about doing a private road. We've got a few of those in the township, but it would go in, it would loop all around all four properties and then come back out.
Does anybody prove a water back there? That's first.
But.
Sanitation, for sanitation purposes.
What does?
Right, and the sanitation is newer now, so they're going more towards.
Even if they were able to do a split, it's not splitting into tiny, I mean, they'd be at least ten acre parcels, so.
This, do they, do they own the property now?
No.
Okay.
They won't purchase it.
Over forty acres.
Ninety, isn't it?
No, it's just over, I think it's between forty and forty-five.
Split with him and his wife split up.
You're talking about Dill's property.
Yeah, right.
I've got that one, we're kind of in the beginning, we, I just had a meeting with them last week, week before.
It might be a McGurman County thing, by the way.
What?
The, you know, having a multi-family, um, you know, and having a.
Private subdivision.
Yeah, having a road that goes back through there and then splitting off from the road, it, you might be actually creating like. You know, a mini subdivision type thing, and that usually is handled by the county.
See, that's the thing, I, something like that, I don't even know where to begin, it's so far beyond my.
Well, I just know that because my father-in-law did that with, um, a, a parcel that he bought. It had to go through the, uh, Purple County and then they had to grant permission through there. To be able to make a mar, multi-parcel off of a, you know, uh, a new, basically a new road that was put in. And the road had to have ditch lines and, you know, be, you know, a.
Sanitation.
A road. Well, it was in the country, so everybody would have, they all had, it would, sanitation wasn't a problem because they have your own, um, subject system. And. I mean, I don't know, I think you're looking at a county thing.
And I were glad to handle it.
I mean, you'd love to hand out it.
So.
But does that bring up anything, because we've asked you before, and Joe being here, maybe you know a tooth in the inside workings of the BCA. Does that bring up anything that you're encountering in terms of looking at the resolutions that we wish would say something more clearly? Or something to be more definitive somehow?
Not, I mean, there's nothing in the resolution where I'm just like, I wish this was different, not for this case, no.
But man.
Ignited, Ignited Church is doing a sign for it, um, the two lots on Germantown, Middletown, that is going to be the, the one that puts me in the mental asylum. Uh, we're talking four variances on two separate parcels.
Where are those?
It's Germantown, Middletown, um, right close to the Madison line.
Over on four.
Um, they are two ten acre parcels with side by side, each of them have fifty feet of road frontage. They, they start out skinny and they give, yeah, um, it has previously been farmed.
Other houses in the front, that's.
There's no houses.
Why, why did it end up like that?
Oh, maybe the neighbors, but I'm not sure. But you've got, right now, there's a. Really realtor that I'm not a fan of, um. But he's trying to sell it, apparently they have a buyer who wants to build on one, have Sun build on the other. But there's one driveway and they're going to share it, so it's way over a thousand feet. The lot depth, it's three times the lot width, the, uh, you gotta have a conditional user variance to build on. Less than twenty acres in the ag district and the lot frontage is almost nonexistent, so. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem, is like, there's a shared driveway while they're family and then.
Yeah.
Someone else buys it, that's one of the problems.
So why is this such a big headache, I mean.
Just because it's, it's.
There it is.
Yeah, but putting together the, the packet to present to them, it's, it's just so much, there's so many different things. It's like, can't we just, can't someone just buy them both, put them together and build on twenty, boom, you're done, easy peasy. I mean, you still have to get the, you know, a couple of variances, but it wouldn't be, that one's, that one's the big one. I'm still waiting on one variance application for, be able to move forward on that one. I just got a. I just got a phone call from a very not, super nice woman the other day, she is looking at a couple of different parcels. She did not say where in the township, they want to bring a mulch processing business to the township. Mulch processing, what was it, sand and gravel, sales. It's kind of like a landscaping thing. But she did specifically say mulch processing, so. That one kind of threw me for a loop and I kept searching the resolution saying, all right, what districts is this allowed in? And I think it was I one or I two, it's, the very first paragraph said something about. Processing of wood.
Yeah, industrial.
So I guess that falls under that, but it, it doesn't say anything about sand, gravel and topsoil. It doesn't say anything about selling it. I'm kind of at a loss.
There's a couple of those around, um, that, where they do that kind of thing and then they. They have different grades of gravel, you know, partitioned off. So that, and somebody can come in and say, oh, you know, I, I, and then they haul out gravel or, and you know, the mulch is over here, there's. There's one on, uh, seven twenty-five, um, halfway to Grattis. And, um, there's another one also in Purple County, another one on, um. Green Bush Road where they have divided that off and then they have several different kinds of gravel and mulch. So it's, it is a thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a business.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out in that I one or I two. It, it very vaguely says something about.
It's not an ag thing.
Right, no, 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 it's definitely not in the ag district, she would definitely, no matter what, she'd have to get a zoning change.
In the properties she's looking at.
We don't even have an I one, I think it was. Yeah, it says the manufacturing, compounding, assembling or treatment or any combination of such processes. Articles or products from the following substances, and it lists a whole bunch, air, fur, belt, fiber. And then, and wood, but not including as a principal operation, the manufacturing of such, such, such substances. Which I had no idea what that last sentence.
I think it means you can't do malt.
Yeah, you can't manufacture it, you can't make it, but then, but it says the manufacturing or compounding, assembling or treatment. And then it says and wood, but not including as a principal operation, the manufacturing of such, such, such substances.
That's why she's throwing sand in there.
Yeah, what does that mean, not including as a principal operation? The main, I, yeah.
I don't know, is it manufactured, I mean, you know, it comes from.
It's processed wood, right?
Round up tree limbs and whatever, you know.
Compounding.
They're trimming, whatever, I mean, there are people in the township that have, you know, volunteered, hey, empty your trucks here.
Because that's, that's the thing, at first I, you know, I told her is, I, I got with Mark and I told him and, and he said, well, that's not in any district. We don't allow that in any district, it's not. Use.
Well, primary, it reminds me of the wording we went through when we were doing at the wedding venues where you had to have for the agritourism. You had to, uh, every primary business is fifty percent, I recall, right, fifty percent, you had to have. Agricultural, or else it was a dollar amount.
I don't remember what that was, but there was something tied to your some, certain percent of your revenue.
It's, that is, uh.
Agritourism.
Wedding venues.
Yeah.
But that was, again, that was an idea, that even wasn't a primary business, it just meant you had to have a certain amount. Also, I think primary would have to be about fifty percent, I don't know, that'd be one way to.
I just didn't know, because at first Mark said, it's not permitted anywhere, so I called this woman back and I said. It's not permitted use in any of her districts, she got hateful, she said, we are the most unfriendly township, blah, 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 blah.
It's your fault.
And she's the one that pointed out that the word manufacturing, compounding, assembling or treatment would. Okay. But where, so I, I thought, you know what, I'm going to hold on to this and I'm going to give this to you guys and see what, what. The consensus is here.
Isn't it an industrial?
I one district.
Yeah, and that's a tough one to get.
Yep.
It's very small.
But do. Does that, does that count as that? Is, is that?
Well, until we look into it, it's hard to say, I would say.
I agree.
Because I thought, okay, I can give her that one.
Could need some other choice.
But what about topsoil?
Yeah.
Gravel and sand, does say anything about those and it doesn't say anything about being able to sell them. Or is that implied, that's kind of what Mark said, is it implied?
Sounds like a legal term to me, a legal.
Yes, no, yeah, the deliverance. Then I was really, I was really, I, I had a hard time with this one and I wanted, I would like to be able to call her back and give her something.
It would come before us because she's asking for. A change of, you know, what?
District.
Of districts, and it's zone what now, Aggie?
Well, she did not say where.
Well, you don't know.
No, she said she was looking at a couple of different parcels, but we don't have any I one and the only I, I, anything that's allowed in I one is also allowed in I two. So the only I two we have is where SRM is. So regardless of wherever she's looking at it, she's going to have to get. A change of going.
That'd be a hard sell.
So do I just say? Do I just say, go for it and then let her come to you guys and present, look, this is what I want to do?
She's got to, you know, give her an application. If she thinks she's got a.
They, apparently they, they have a one in Centerville, she said they have a couple.
Just stall and go away.
Yeah, I don't even really want to talk to her, she was not very nice the first time. So, I mean, if you, if you say, go ahead and give her, you know, tell her she's going to have to change in zoning. I just wanted to make sure, kind of double-check with you guys before I say, okay. To see what your thoughts were on, does that categorize underneath?
Can't even speak to that because of the fact that she hasn't told you where it is.
That's, that's, we don't have enough information.
Well, like I said, it doesn't matter where it is because we don't have that district.
You said if, if it's anywhere, it's an I one.
Yeah. I was just big surprised, go ahead, you're going to have to change it to an I one district. Does what, the, the definition in the I one district, does that cover what they're wanting to do, that was what I wanted to know from you guys.
Doesn't sound like it's possible to know until she explains what she's doing.
We don't have enough information, she's going to have to apply and, you know, run through the process.
Well, good, because then that's, you guys are not.
Basically, it, the answer is it doesn't fit in any, it definitely doesn't fit in any district except possibly I one, but that would. That would have to, that would require a zoning change if she were somewhere else, so that. And I don't know if you supply, uh, people with where those districts are, do they come in looking to you for?
Well, the map's on our website.
Yeah, so they can look at, see, see, check the website, see what district that's where your business possibly could be if it were approved.
Okay. Send her a application.
She's got to do some work, yeah.
Um, I'm trying to think.
Anything else?
The only other question I have is some, I, I've gotten asked a few times, there is nothing that I can find in the resolution. Domestic fowl as pets in residential district. Lots of people have chickens now. In the, in the ag district, it says you can have domestic fowl as pets in the ag district, but without backyard chickens.
Came up, oh, oh, number.
Talking about that.
Yeah.
Those eggs are eight dollars.
Yeah. So, maybe something you guys want to include. Is allowed.
We have in the past.
They're allowed to do it in the cities.
Well, as you're saying.
City of Columbus, you're allowed.
I've been asked and I, I'm searching feverishly and I'm like, well, it doesn't say you can't, doesn't say you can't.
Where would it fall under, which?
Where would that be in what? In any of the, our district.
City of Columbus and now we've got, we've got avian, everywhere.
But now you've got more and more people that, you know, you have a couple acres in a residential district, they want backyard chickens, they want, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, well. When it comes up, we'll deal with it.
Okay. But that's pretty much what I recall on.
Have we read the minutes, is there a? I'm bored with the Dan, did you have a chance?
He gave me a couple of changes, small.
If I have any comments on the minutes?
I read through them, I didn't catch anything, but sometimes I can't even find my own shoes.
All right, do we?
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Put them in both, both in one, the, do I hear a motion to here, to approve the minutes for December third? Twenty twenty-four and January seventh, twenty twenty-five?
Yep.
December second, January seventh.
I hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain, because I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's old business, any other old business? Okay, new business, um, so. I was, we're going to try to wrap this up at eight o'clock, um, just so you, oh, try to hold meetings to just an hour. If we've got to go longer, eight thirty at the very longest, and then we'll just call another meeting. Then go all evening, okay, so, um. So agenda for the year, I just threw some things down here because. At the end of last year, mining seemed to be the thing that we had to address, right? I mean, remember, you and I, Sean, you and I have, you said, mining, 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 so as far as, uh. Putting that on our agenda, um, but it's a, it's a big thing to get our arms around. I think that we have to look at that from the ground up just simply because of the changes in the ORC that have been made over the last. Six years, maybe.
Are we allowed to take it out of the ag district as a condition?
I don't know.
Be the easiest, I mean, yes, put more regulations on it if you want to, but. We did like we did with solar and say, look, you can only do it in this district.
That's a question for the county or the prosecutor's office.
Okay, because right now it's a conditional use and it's not stopping, it won't stop anybody from going before the BCA and more than half the township.
Yeah, I am not so sure that the ORC doesn't, or you can do it just about any agricultural area. I think that might be the case. And if the ORC says that we can't restrict it, we'll have to look into that.
So that's like the courts are upholding the, you know, the, the BCA's decision on that, so really.
Here.
Yeah, it really would, in any future, you know, mining. Um, parcels that might come up would, it would have to go through the same process. It's all the same kind of soil. So. They would get basically turned down.
Reference other cases too.
There have been many cases in the, the state of Ohio that the, uh, mining companies have prevailed. That's, that's been the trend, actually. So, um, I, I, you can't just look at our little township as the, you know, for the test case. And, and that was just one legal case. So anyway, that's, that's on our docket, comprehensive land use plan. Um, has been strongly suggested several times at the Ohio Township Association. Where conference saying that every township should have one, as kind of a, an overall. Plan for, you know, for development growth and that kind of thing, so it's done the right way, you know, and there's. There are certain forces out there, you know, driven by money largely, that. Are going to come, it's just, how can you control it to your benefit? Uh, how can you preserve land? To, to, to the, to the community, to the community's best interests, for the community's values. That's, in other words, otherwise it becomes willy-nilly, you know, it's a willy-nilly process and there's no guiding. Overall view as to why this should be. Industrial districts over here, why these are commercials or why this is agriculture, so that, that's the thinking behind that.
I get that, it's been, it's been cost prohibitive. But if we can get a grant, um. You should probably go ahead, but.
Do, what is, do we have a budget, a zoning?
Do, what is, do we have a budget, a zoning budget at the township?
Well, I think somebody looked into that and I figured it was gonna cost like fifty grand or something.
Well, I'm just wondering, is there any money set aside at the township to, to do zoning work other than, when you get paid and?
It'll lose kind of.
Wasn't there even an issue about even going to the OTA meetings? Was the budget issues?
Oh, oh, yeah.
And that's not exactly very expensive. If it, that's an indication of what the budget is.
Uh, this year, I think that was okay, but, um. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's expensive. You have to look at everyone.
So the township needs a big sale.
I think Trish just offered to head it up.
Start bringing in some rabbit now. They can go to conference.
Patrick's road, he'll left her money.
Sold that knit sweater or something. Okay, so, you know, here, here's another one. This is something that's just been hanging out there. This is an easy one. And it's gonna get to, this, this gets down to point D that heading towards, so property setback of structure. So currently, I think our, our distance between a structure, not, not the main structure, but like a, a barn or a shed or, you know, so, something that is out there is only six feet from a property line. And in a, in a township like ours, that's almost like what you'd expect in town.
I think that's in the Ag district there, isn't it?
I don't think so. I think that's residential. What I, is what I remember, Marv. You may be right, but. So.
It's just under. Or everything. Thirty-eight. Accessory, accessory uses. I mean, accessory structures, it's just a six feet off your inside that line.
So, you know, you have two, two properties, you might only have twelve feet between the, the two buildings in, in a, in a area out here where we've got a lot of land, you know. So my only question is, is that a good standard or could we change that? You know, is there a reason to have more space between? If you got, it, it could be done based on acreage. You know, if you got a hundred acres, why stick it over against somebody's corner? Put, make it their problem, not yours. Stick it out in the corner, but something to think about. And, and that would be a fairly easy one we could, we could go after. So but there are many other little things like this that have been hanging apart for so long. So how, number D down, or letter D down here, how do we get more done? Have we assigned teams to do research and meetings? Trish, kind of like what you were doing. Because we we agree on a lot of things here at the meetings, but then we meet again and, you know, it's not.
And that's part of my confusion too, because like I, I had said to you at the very beginning, you would, you were telling me how this works, because they asked me to come here. So I was learning, you're giving me the information, and then when we would meet, then Mark said, you have to be careful how many people are meeting.
Oh.
Because, then, so that was, that, I felt like that was a you can't do that. So maybe that needs to be in the regulations on how your committee forms things.
Sunshine laws, right?
Yeah, because of the sunshine law. So I was like, well, how do you get anything done? That's part of, that's part of my confusion on how you are supposed to work, like many teams and committees do. You sit and you go work on things and you have to communicate on that. You divide and conquer. So, I mean, I, yeah, there's a pro-, so what is that process? That's what I, that's what I was asking all along. It's like, how do you do that without getting your hands slapped?
Do we have seven or five people?
We've got five.
So it's five, so we just have to be committees of two.
That's exactly right.
You only can have two people working on something at a time.
You just can't have a quorum.
Okay.
I mean, I guess we could have committees of three, of three. They just couldn't all meet together at the same time.
Okay.
And we can do work independently and kind of talk to one and talk to a, the, the leader of the committee.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's, that's the way to tackle it, because, you know, the folks that set these, this legislation, uh, of the, you know, the Ohio Legislature, they've got staff, you know? They get, that's how they get stuff done. They have somebody go off, we've gotta, we've gotta do it ourselves. We have nobody, so.
I think they tend, make no more, again, I know you know more than I do, and about sunshine laws, is there, is there any definition of what constitutes? That, for example, like we're, like what Trish did, is information finding. Is there?
Yeah.
Is there, probably, I can't imagine there's any kind of regulation against research or? I think the sunshine laws do it if you're collaborating to come up with a, to sort of like put your finger on the scale, I guess, ahead of the time in a meeting.
Yeah, it's whether or not, it's, 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 you know, is the board communicating as a whole at a time when it's not in session, that we hasn't, have we, that, that Sean hasn't provided notice that we're having a meeting? We could have committees and Sean would just have to provide notice that the committees are meeting and we could meet. We can meet in here with three people. And that would be fine. It would just be a public meeting. Just have to take minutes, but the minutes don't have to be like, I mean, the minutes we're taking here.
There's no deliberation and no, that kind of thing, so that would.
Well, if she, if she notices the meeting, we could do whatever we want.
How about two of us meeting in the library to do some?
That's fine.
Well, so that's what we can proceed with, I think, with that.
Start assigning homework.
What's that?
Start assigning homework. Hey, you, you do this, you do this, you do this. And the next time.
You know, what you might want to work on as far as all the many things we've talked about over the years and stuff that's still hanging apart, the big ones, kind of like mining, that's kind of, that's a real armload.
And, and there are a lot of aspects to that. I mean, when we had the BZA hearing here, I mean, one of the concerns from the people, I mean, there were, there were lots of them, but two that seemed relatively easy to fix to me. One was, I mean, it sounds like when, when whoever provided the authority to expand the mining, you know, the deal was there was going to be plenty of screening. And a screening doesn't seem to be there. And if we had civil penalties, we could address that right away. Uh, the other thing was that, you know, that they start really early in the morning and they go really late at night and people hear the, the, the backup of the, you know, the, the beep, 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 beep. And I think that we could address, we could address noise.
I think it was Rachel that brought up, it's like sunup to sundown. Well, in summertime, sunup to sundown's a lot longer than it is at wintertime.
It's on the witnesses in that hearing though, said it was after dark.
Yeah.
So it was happening.
But if it's, if it's, I think sunup to sundown is a little more fluid, then, you know, seven A to seven P.
Yeah.
Nope, that's it.
There, there's issues of dust. You know, you've got your, your stirring up silica in the air and silica's not good for anybody. So those kind of things.
Yeah, I think we're gonna address some of those. We can start to address some of those things now and maybe even put some enforcement mechanisms into place.
Could we? Next part, well, next meeting, regular meeting is scheduled for April one, so we want to think about that.
Well, one thing I'm surprised, looking at that document again, and was that it said that for that case, that there was a bond, a reclamation for this supposedly, and someone said, what, how do you do a reclamation on that big gravel pit? You're not gonna go back to it.
Right.
And so we had some of the same discussion, we're talking about solar farms, because we had, we went through, we rewrote some of the, not rewrote, we actually based on OTA documents and stuff, we put together a resolution for solar farms. And one of the big discussions we had was about, how do you enforce that? And again, it was about bonds. Do you have a performance bond up front to do it? I had no idea. At least I somehow skipped over, read anything about the, the mining operations that there was, that supposedly have a, a bond. I don't know. Where does that reside? Is, is there some such thing? Did you remember that in the, in the hearing? At least I got that from reading. There was a, there was a, and, and so it's never, the case we had, when we were talking about for solar farms, we said, well, how does it get enforced? And we're talking about doing like a five-year, do you have a five-year, go back in? It's like, I'm thinking, why isn't this being done right now? If there is a bond and there is, and it was subject to certain requirements, why are, why are we not? And the requirements are not being enforced or not, not, they aren't being enforced, they're being violated and people are complaining about it. Why, why can't we stop? Said there's that one, in that instance of why are they doing it, asked, required for the loud hours. I think it would be great if we were more responsive about that way, in which I think we are. I think that's why we're trying to find things up front, but if we could find some way to, to put some kind of.
At three AM, you're going out there.
Way of enforcing it. So, but I guess one of the questions, maybe that's for the homework. We're talking about, can we find out where, where that exists? As far as, maybe we start with, with the mining, if it's already in place. Um, we could use the same thing possibly for other situations, but also use that to see what, what it is. Who, is it, was it, once they sold that property, did that bond reach its end of its life, the termination point, or is it still out there? I doubt.
Where does one even begin to look?
I don't, I don't.
We put that in place with the solar farm.
Yeah.
That there had to be a bond that would cover.
Performance bond, we call it.
Yeah. And it had to be reviewed or something every so many years or?
I forget how that was, we debated so long about whether it was five years or?
Yeah.
I forget what the final wording was.
I mean, typically with gravel pits, if you're talking about those specifically, I mean, you know, once the gravel's played out, it's abandoned.
But, yeah, how do you reclaim that? I don't.
Well, I mean, you know, they're, I don't know, but, you know, some sort of fencing or, I don't know, that might look terrible. I don't know. I mean, some, you didn't really think about that. What, what would you want to have happen? You're basically, it turns it into a big lake and, you know, somebody will buy it and make a fishing lake out of it. As you're going into, leaving Carlisle and heading into Franklin, those big gravel pits.
Yeah.
You know, this become fishing, this, this became or are now fishing lakes. You know, pegging them near fish. So, you know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
That's a tough one. We've put wording in there, because we put wording in exactly what had to be done.
Yeah, we did for the solar.
I know, so I'm, I'm just wondering if there's something similar existing already.
That's a great question.
You know, but what would you, you know, you'd really have to look into that and say, what would you want them to do? You know, when they, when they, when they do walk away from it, when they're done with it, you know?
That's important, but also it's important to, to, to not allow things to be done right now that are illegal, basically.
Well, yeah, I mean, because there are gravel pits also right there on Butter Street that have become where they can, um, build them or dump in, um, um, you know, building a refuge, you know, from, from torn down buildings and stuff, you know? You really don't want that going into the office.
I thought that was stopped. Wasn't that stopped?
Well, they were dumping, I know, but it was happening, even if it has been stopped. I mean.
Oh, I agree.
They did it for you.
And that's, or the people testified there too. There's no, there's no real division. There's no berm there or any kind of way of dividing that from Butter Street, especially in the wintertime, you see it right down in there. So it's, you know, I think it's something, if we could, if we could enforce it. I know we had a promise several years ago when that place was, operation was sold down there to Pickwa. They would, they would clean that road and it would not be dusty. I, I don't need gold Sugar Street anymore, because it's, you got, like, you can, and see sometimes.
You know what? We, we dropped the ball on that.
Because, you know, that came through us, whether, to, to build that plant there. Do you remember?
Well, I didn't, was it building, was it building or just the change of ownership was there?
No, I mean, you know, they built the new facility.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, we had something to do with that. And what we didn't require and we did it height and all that kind of stuff. Remember?
Oh, yeah, I, okay. What we didn't require was like a, a, a tire bath on, or, you know, for them exiting the plant.
Right.
You know, yeah, they spray some water on there, but I mean, there are things in place where they actually have to drive through a pool of water, which cleans off the tires before they, whatever. We didn't think about that.
But I'm sure we had wording that said, for us, they had promised that that would be, that the roads would not be affected by dust or dirt or gravel, that they would, they would maintain it.
They, you know, they were supposed to sweep them and yada, yada. Well, that, that doesn't really happen. No, we didn't. Whitehead did a decent job.
Yeah, well.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, we should have, I, I didn't think about it at the time. You know, I thought about later.
No, I mean, you know, we're not experts in these.
No. You know, but yeah, there should have been a tire bath that they had to drive through, you know, clean those tires off before, so they don't drive all, drag all that stuff out of it.
Records from that, right from a long time ago to read it to see what was said.
Yeah, but. I can tell you right now, we failed, we failed to do that. I, you know.
We failed to do the tire bath, but I think you did do the, like, you, you said, well, I've heard it several times that there wouldn't be dust, there wouldn't damage the roads and there would be screens and none of any of those things.
Yeah, we did the cleanup. I mean, they were, to keep it clean and.
That's what I mean, like pull it to see what was exactly said from that time. It wasn't that long ago. And look at.
Yeah, that was probably at least ten years ago.
I think it's twenty nineteen.
Was that?
Well, Sean has about had it. She's had a long day.
Our next regular meeting's supposed to be April first. I'd kind of like to take Bella somewhere for spring break. That is smack dab in the middle of it. Can we scoop that?
You bet. Got it. You gotta have that time.
She actually wants to.
She won't be around long.
So, that's kind of nice.
So where do you want?
Can we try for the eighth instead? Well, depending on if it was BZ meeting.
Eighth isn't good for me, but I could do probably any other day that week.
I wouldn't know till I look at the refrigerator.
The trustee meeting comes fifteenth. We could do Monday, the seventh. For Wednesday, the ninth, or do you guys want to stick with Tuesdays?
Monday.
Tuesday, the fifteenth.
Monday, the seventh works fine for me, and so does the ninth.
Monday, the seventh?
I think it's probably, okay for me too.
Problem, you know, I'll say, okay.
Your calendar.
Okay, let's go Monday, Monday, the seventh at seven o'clock.
Appreciate it, guys.
Absolutely. Just ask. Okay, very good.
You're seventh? My name is April the seventh.
April the seventh and seventh.
Yeah. All right, any sevens in there?
Get your man. First meeting and I already lied to Joe. I said it would be done at eight.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn? And homework? Do we have homework either? All right, we're just talking about homework. We're not giving homework.
He's alright.